Call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the Prolegiance. Good morning and welcome to our August 23 county commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the back corner table if you haven't signed in to speak today, if you would sign in at the back table with your name and address. And I think that is it. And if you need a listening device, which I don't think anybody does in here, it would be Tyler in the front row here. With that, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the who's same sign, motion passes unanimously. Next is the consent agenda. I would look for a motion to for the consent agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion as second on the consent agenda. Roll call vote.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, there's our opportunity for public comment. And I think we have several people here today that would like to speak. So this is your opportunity to speak on public comment. If you just give your names, you don't have to give your address here, as long as you've signed in.
Hi, Tiana Brummett. I've never done this before, so give me just a second. Let me get it, so.
I can't see it.
Okay. See if I can click out. Okay. I'm just trying to get it so it doesn't have the. Oh, okay. Oh, what did we do? And then click on this, right?
Now she dropped it way down.
Okay. And this is turning. Okay, so this is through the book. Okay, and that's how many? Okay, how am I going to get this still show? Okay. I don't know. Maybe I can just move it a little bit. I wonder if I can hold up like that. Like that?
Hold it up to the screen, please.
Will this move out, you think? Will it get bigger? Okay.
Hi, it's 40. So, this is my black box. And I bought this black box. This black box is worth thousands of dollars. Thousands of dollars. I ordered it. I paid for it. But they will not give me the key to open it. I own it. I have valuables in here. But I can't get to it. My friends, that's exactly what's going on with your voting machines. You pay for these. And more than just so-called valuables, you know what's in the black box? Your future. Everything. What you pay for gas, if your borders are secure, what's being taught in your schools, whether you're going to have a lockdown, forced with a jab, COVID passports, everything related to your future, that of your children, your grandchildren, is determined by what's in this black box. And yet, you're not allowed to see what's inside of it. This is black box voting. Why do they not want you to see what's inside of it? The fact that they protest so much, doesn't that show you the old saying, "We think thou protestest too much"? Well, there was a book written in 2003 called.
Hi, my name's Michelle Clennick. I'm a Sioux Falls resident since 2012. Graduated Lenox High School in 98. And I too am concerned about our elections. I want to make sure that, you know, going forward, it's safe and secure. So I too have a video, because they say it better than I do.
Mr. Curtis, would you please state your full name to correct?
My name is.
Where do you resign? What is your profession?
Terrible glare.
Could you please speak in the microphone so the audience can hear your testimony?
I'm a computer programmer.
Mr. Curtis, are there programs that can be used to secretly fix elections?
Yes.
How do you know that could be the case?
Because in October of 2000, I wrote a prototype for President Congressman Tom Feeney at the company I worked for in Opito, Florida that did just that.
And when you say did just that, it would rig an election?
It would flip the vote 51-49. Whoever you wanted it to go to and whichever race you wanted to win.
And would that program that you designed be something that elections officials, that might be on county boards of elections, could detect?
They'd never see it.
Mr., would you answer that question once again?
They would never see it.
So how would such a program, a secret program that fixes the election, how could it be detected?
You would have to view it either in the source code, or you'd have to have a receipt and then count the hard paper against the actual vote total. Other than that, you won't see it.
All right, Mr. Curtis, if you had been asked, you or others with your professional expertise, had been asked to design a protective program to, that would protect the Ohio elections from against such software to fix the election, could you have done so?
If we've been asked to make a program that can fix the elections, sure, anybody can do it.
No, could you have designed a program or to a procedure or a protocol that would have protected Ohio against this kind of rigging?
No, you have to look at the source code. You have to get probably programmers from both or all parties to look at the source code and determine if there's anything in there that shouldn't be there. I mean, it's a simple program. You're adding one to a person's total. It's 100 lines of code tops.
All right, if.
Please see.
Are you aware of whether there was any protective action in Ohio against this kind of vote rigging through software?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know.
You were not asked to assist in the development of any protective system, is that correct?
No, I was not.
In Europe, have you reviewed at all the election results in Ohio?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Given the availability of such vote rigging software and the testimony that has been given under oath of substantial statistical anomalies and gross differences between exit polling data and the actual tabulated results, do you have an opinion whether or not Ohio election, the Ohio election, presidential election, was hacked?
Yes, I would say it was. I mean, if you're, if you have exit polling data that is significantly off from the vote, then it's probably hacked.
And your testimony is under oath?
Yes, sir.
And the testimony you've given is true?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And I guess I'd like to say better safe than sorry. So thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. I am Vicki Burr and I live on the southeast side of Sioux Falls. And I also have another video for you to watch. This is Mr. Curtis now.
And so the person who came in and requested a, basically a touchscreen machine, wanted to know if he could have a touchscreen machine, but that it could be manipulated. I figured it's like a penetration thing. I could write it. I can show them what to do and then I can tell them how to make sure it doesn't happen. So I wrote it. I handed it to them. It's really simple. In fact, they put it on the screen for you if you want to see it. Because I kept it. Are we up? Whoop. Okay. We're not on the screen.
Well, there we are. There we are.
We're on the screen.
Did everyone hear that? Okay, so start over with the, when they came, somebody came to you, right?
A fellow who, he was the Speaker of the Florida House. He was also the head lobbyist of the company I worked for. Now, in most places, that might be considered a conflict of interest, but I was in Florida.
Now, was this guy, this guy was Tom Feeney?
Tom Feeney.
Okay, who was Tom Feeney?
He was Speaker of the Florida House and he was running mate of Jeb Bush.
Was he a, what was he, a Republican?
He was a Republican.
A Republican, okay.
At the time, I was a Republican. So I figured, he's a good guy, right?
And what are you now?
I am now a Democrat. Been a Democrat for.
And you voted for Biden, right?
I voted for Biden. I even liked Biden when I was a Republican. So I am like a Biden Democrat.
Need you to all know this, okay? And so this Republican came to him, says, Tom Feeney, now go ahead and tell him what he, what he asked you to do.
Essentially, he wanted this program where the vote could be manipulated. My assumption was it's to keep it from happening. You know, those evil Democrats might be out there writing it right now. So we're going to show how it works and how to fix it. And so essentially, this is what I wrote, is the same thing. I mean, I couldn't take it out of the company, but I just rewrote it because it's so simple. Anyway, as you can see, you have a Democrat, a Republican, and a Green Party, okay? So if you look at. If you look at the box in the bottom, you would not see that on your machine, obviously, when you're voting. But it's a little better if you can actually see what's going on. So in this, basically, if you do what it's supposed to do, and you, you vote for the Democrat, Democrat goes up by one. You vote for the Republican, Republican goes up by one. Vote for the Green, so you can add to that 15 vote total, and it goes up by one. Okay.
You guys caught that when you said, do what you're supposed to do, vote for the Democrat. Did you see that part?
So there you are. But let's say that sometime during the election, you are now going to go in and fix this vote. If you can see, the Republicans at 12:42 and the Democrats at 8:66, right? But I want the Democrat to win. So all I have to do is just tell him, wave a magic wand, and there it goes. And on the totals, it's fixed. On the logs, it's fixed. Everything is fixed. Because a lot of people talk about the logs being wrong. That is lazy programming. Logs do.
Okay, I'm sorry you couldn't see the result of that on the video, but the Democrat went from about 600 votes up to 1,300 votes with wave of the wand, is what he said. I have given all of you a pencil this morning, and I want you to focus in on the lead. Just focus in on the lead. That is how big these modems are in the machines. So unless you are a computer expert, you have no idea, because they're inserted in the motherboard along with all the other wires. There's a problem with that. ESNS will not allow anyone to open these machines and look at them. So how much of that vote switching that Mr. Curtis did is happening right here in Minnehaha County? My request to you as commissioners, we have an election coming up in November.
You have 25 seconds.
We have an election coming up in November. I am asking, because of the uncertainty of a modem in these tabulators and vote switching occurring, that you take your right and say, "We will hand count every precinct." Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Gary. I live in Minnehaha County. Back in May, I got up here to speak, and I was asked to remove a piece of clothing. Because in your state's attorney's opinion, that piece of clothing was against the law. That piece of clothing was a Trump cap, and it has 2020 on it. Trump was not running for office. He was not on the ballot, and he was not campaigning. And your state's attorney admitted after the fact that that was his opinion. It was not the law. Then in June, I signed up to be a poll worker. I wanted to see how your auditor Ben Kite's gold standard of elections worked. I was really interested. They called me. They signed me up, gave me instructions. I was excited to see how this worked. And I was hoping to see the gold standard. Three days later, I received a call. They scratched my name, along with several others, off the list. The reason they gave was because I was on the ballot in a different precinct. Well, I looked up the law. Not only has that been done before, it is not against the law. So your auditor Ben Kite and his department, and not only is it not against the law, it's not even a department procedure they have. Me and several others were Ben Kite's political opponents. So in his opinion, he thought we were a threat against the polling process, and your state's attorney backed him up on this. He threw his political opponents out of the process. I was not able to watch it. Two weeks ago, chairperson explicitly stated that public comment was for non-agenda items only. Now, while she didn't say it, it was very heavily implied that if we had a public comment, we would be able to make that comment when the agenda item came up. Halfway through the meeting, the rule was changed. Now, it's a state law that says when you have an open public meeting, you have to provide public comment. But when the agenda item came up, we were not allowed to speak. And when I contested that, I was told to, and I'm paraph, and I'm just adding my interpretation of this, to sit down and shut up or leave. Well, I was not about to shut up for something I felt I was very right on. We had things to say. This affects our personal life. So I got up and left, realizing as I walked out the door and met the deputy on the way out, that had I not left, I would have been arrested. The same was with my Trump cap. I saw the deputy watching me the entire time. Had I put my Trump cap back on, I would have been arrested, because it was your state's attorney's opinion, like it was Ben Kite's opinion, like it was this commission's opinion, that I was breaking the law. Where's the timer? Okay. And last, and two weeks ago, what I was contesting to get up to speak was Summit Carbon Solutions. They are greatly affecting, affecting us. I commend Commissioner Barth for asking him flat out, what are they paying him? He was called out of order. I can tell you what they were paying him. The Royal Embassy of Saudi Arabia is paying him $10,000 a month to represent Saudi interests on American soil. And your lack of being able to do anything gave Dan Liederman a great big smile on his face as he walked out of here, because he can now sue me for not allowing their company to trespass on my land to drill holes, even though they have not yet got a permit. When is this commission going to start standing up for the public that they represent? So lastly, I'm here to represent South Dakota canvassing. You heard the evidence that was given here. Again, in your state's attorney's opinion, these cast vote records are not public, are not for public viewing. That is not true. There is nothing on the cast vote records that has any private information. I can't tell who cast that ballot, where they lived, who they are, male or female. All I can see is who they voted for, and as they go through the machine, when it was. So why are you allowing your state's attorney, why are you all hiding behind the law instead of protecting what's rightfully ours? I'm asking you to give us some information. You may prove us wrong. I don't know why you're hiding it. It's a suitcase deal. You bought a suitcase from ESNS, and they didn't give you a key to look in it. They control our elections. They control our output. But you allow the suitcase to be locked. We can't even look in it. So please, give us some information. This affects you as well as us, your kids, your grandkids. Do what's right.
Anyone else for public comment? Trish, I think they might have another video. I think she's working on it.
How you doing? Glad you're with us. And ESNS is headquartered in Omaha, isn't it?
Unfortunately.
And so I guess your whole state uses ESNS, right?
Take in.
So I guess the whole state uses ESNS?
Yes. Yes.
All right.
Unfortunately.
Explain these.
So I was told that because we're running a little bit behind, that we didn't need to get into the weeds with the slides. So if you want to back it up to the Nebraska image, I'll just do a high level thing here for, real quick.
All right. That'd be great.
So as Brandon has said, we are the home of the largest, super-secret, black box vote counting company in the country, if not the world. And why is, well, there's absolutely no transparency, no verifiability. We can't get any records from any county in the state from our ESNS-controlled elections. So our executive, who's responsible for this? Our executive branch. And I'm going to name them by name. Ricketts, our governor. Peterson, our Attorney General. And Evin, our Secretary of State. They hijacked Nebraska's county elections and gave them to ESNS to be counted, to count our votes in secret. Now, what do you think of that? Yeah, thank you. Our election, the elections belong to you, the people, not to the counties, not to the clerks of the counties, not to the SOS. Um, I think here's a point that hasn't been brought up. I don't think, I might be wrong, but in some places, felons are not allowed to vote. Is that correct?
Yes.
But felons, and maybe not felons, but just simply unscrupulous people can own election, election counting companies or vote counting companies. And there's no law against that. How does that work? ESNS will not disclose the owners, their ownership. So we can't even do a background check on these people.
And by the way, this was, this is, you go into the book Black Box Voting, and they, and I'll speak on that tomorrow for 15 minutes. That book was written by Bev Harris in 2003, and she lists all of these people surrounded by, around the voting machine industry and inside of it that have indictments, gone to jail, price rigging. I mean, it's just non-stop.
Yep. So if you, yeah, if you go read that book, it has some stories. We have, we had a Senator Hagel.
Yes.
Who was at the top of that, of ESNS, and ran for office. And guess what? ESNS elected him. It wasn't the people, it was ESNS. I think that happened twice.
Yes, it did happen twice.
Yeah.
And he miraculously won all kinds of places in the state that hadn't been won in years. And I mean, he beat some pretty established candidates, but he was the head of the company that was counting his votes.
Yeah, something wrong with that.
And a lot, and a lot of people don't know that.
Yeah.
To this day, a lot of people still don't know that about Chuck Hagel.
In fact, I found, you know, you can go to blackboxvoting.com and you can find the chapters broken down.
Yes, yes.
But you can go to a CIA website and find the whole book in one PDF. It's a great book. Everybody ought to look at it. One more thing I wanted to say about our executive branch, and that is that they did exactly what Obama wanted them to do with the plandemic. Use the planned, COVID plandemic as an excuse to sign off on widespread, unsupervised, no, no excuse, no chain of custody, mail-in and drop-box voting, which further corrupted our already corrupt elections. Somebody needs to run these three out on a rail. They're, they're just clowns. And the last thing that I will say, because, oh, 20 seconds, wonderful.
He said 20 seconds, and that's what I had just said. So thank you. Anyone else?
Cindy Byer, Minnehaha County. I just want to elaborate in case anyone has any questions, that South Dakota in every county uses ESNS machines. South Dakota didn't have ESNS machines for the election prior to 2020 in all of the counties. But prior to the 2020 election, the Secretary of State provided that all counties would be using ESNS tabulating machines to count the ballots. So I just wanted to state that in the event that there was any questions. We do use ESNS tabulating machines, three different versions of them in this state. Thank you.
Anyone else? Nope. Okay. We'll move on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider a motion to authorize the inter-fund transfer of ARPA funds to the general fund. Susan Beamer. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. Susan Beeman Auditor's Office. I'm here today to request a transfer from our American Rescue Plan Fund to our general fund of $10 million for salaries and benefits paid in 2022. As you recall, we received just over $37.5 million of funding through the U.S. Treasury State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Program, which was enacted under the American Rescue Plan Act. And accordingly with that, and that final rule allows for up to revenue replacement up to $10 million as a standard allowance, meaning we don't have to demonstrate, we don't have to, there's not a formula goes through that. You can elect the standard allowance, which we are recommending that we do. And then, related to that, then we have documented the salaries and benefits related to that, and therefore we are asking that you approve this inter-fund transfer of $10 million from our ARPA fund to our general fund.
Any questions for Susan on that? Okay, look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 11 is authorize the chairman to sign a six-month jail bed per diem contract for Moody County. Mr. Mattson, good morning.
Good morning, Warden. Mike Mattson from the Minnehaha County Jail. Before you, is a contract with Moody County for housing inmates for them. We've, we've done that historically, and they, we don't have a current contract. They generally don't keep people with us for a longer period of time, but they have been. So we wanted to get a contract in place.
Are there any questions for Warden Mattson? Commissioner Bender.
So Warden Mattson, this is, the purpose of this contract is just really to establish the rate and the rules, per se, of our custody of those folks. We aren't guaranteeing them any beds for any specific amount of time.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Warden. Is this enough to cover our costs?
This is our current rate that we've been doing. We, we are reevaluating for 2023. And those notices and contracts will go out in the late, late fall, early winter.
So is it cheaper to go to jail or to go to college?
That's a great question. I don't know. I would say jail. College is pretty expensive.
Commissioner Kerski.
Warden, we had a little conversation before. Can you talk about medical?
Mike.
We talked before the meeting, and when we talk about medical expenses, we have an on-jail medical contract. So if somebody receives care for some condition that they have in the jail, that's part of that $97.39 or whatever. But if they require outside of, they have to be hospitalized or that type of thing, that expense goes back to the other county, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything off-site care, prescriptions, that sort of thing, the outside county pays for?
I'm going to add, and I don't know that I'm right, but I think there's an, actually in a formula that we use when we make out those per diems that we've talked about in the past, and we don't do it. The sheriff's office and the warden figure out those per diems, but there is an actual formula.
Correct.
Okay. I'd look for a motion.
So, so move, move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second with a roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is authorize the chairman to sign the 2022 subrecipient agreement with the South Dakota DSS for medical assisted treatment in the jail. Mr. Mattson.
I'm back. So this is just a renewal of our contract from last year to provide funding for our MAT program in the jail. The terms and conditions are all the same, including the dollar amount.
Any questions on the MAT program? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any roll call vote?
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Warden. Item number 13 is authorize the chairman to sign a lease agreement with Lincoln County for the use of Minnehaha County's courtrooms. Tyler Clatt, good morning.
Good morning, Tyler Clatt, Commission Office. For you today is to authorize the chair to sign a lease agreement with Lincoln County. This agreement was in place last year as well, for reference, the idea is to allow Lincoln County to lease a courtroom within the Minnehaha County courthouse. For reference last, or in 2020, 2020, the total annual cost of the courthouse, including maintenance, cleaning, utilities, security, totaled about $1.3 million. The terms of this, terms and conditions of this lease are unchanged from the previous one. The terms include expiration date of June 30, 2023, with monthly payments of $8,333.
Commissioner Bender.
Tyler, thanks for pointing out that the terms of this had not changed at all. I personally would be in favor of amending this contract to limit the term to six months, and to be more reflective of what, you know, the rise in costs that everybody's seeing. I mean, the goal here is we want to be good partners with Lincoln County, but at the same time, we need to make sure that the taxpayers of Minnehaha County are being made whole by the terms of this contract. So I would suggest amending the contract, making it six months instead of one year, and putting in a 7% increase in the rent, which would take the rent to $8,916.31 per month, which is a total increase of about $3,500 per year.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, but I have a comment. Was that $8,333, was that a 2020-1 contract number, or is that the 2022 contract number? I'm, I'm concerned that there might have been, it was, it was the correct one. Okay, okay, I, I, when I read it, I thought that we had the wrong number in there, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second for a 7% increase in a six-month contract. Do we have to do that as an amended, or can we just?
Madam Chair, your folks' attorney's office, I would suggest two motions, one to amend the contract, and then one to approve or authorize the chair to sign the amended contract.
So this is for the amendment, all of those, a roll call vote, please.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and next, I would ask for a motion on the amended contract.
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Tyler. Oh, next one is also Tyler. And number, item number 14 is a briefing on the joint city and county legislative priorities.
Thank you, Tyler Clatt, Commission Office. So each year, representatives from Minnehaha County and municipalities within the county need to put together a list of legislative priorities. The benefit of putting this document together with this group is to create a unified front, so to speak, on issues that we share concern over. These priorities are then shared with legislators who represent Minnehaha County, and we do that prior to the beginning of the next legislative session. The joint priorities are still in a draft format, technically, but they are provided in the packet for your review and feedback. If you have any questions or comments, I could take those now.
Are there any comments for Tyler? Commissioner Kerski.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, these legislative priorities are, I think, pared back quite a bit from previous years, and more philosophical in scope, in that they don't say, "We support this one specific item," but they're broader in, in perspective, and give us the flexibility to work with our legislators and, and the municipalities in Minnehaha County, so that we can all work together, so, I think it's a good plan.
And I'd say, we've been doing this for probably about five years now, where we work with the City of Sioux Falls and other municipalities in Minnehaha County, so we are, let, we are working together for what's the good of the county. Obviously, they have different priorities than we do in, in another set of, and we may have some that don't affect the municipalities, and we bring those forward separately with our own organizations, but this has been a very good collaborative for all of us. Any other questions or comments on that? All right, then I would go on to Liaison Commission Report. Commissioner Bender.
I just would like to thank the sheriff's office. The summer study on jails was here in town yesterday, the legislators were here. They, the sheriff's department gave, including Warden Mattson, gave an excellent tour of the Minnehaha County Jail, gave some background to how we, how that building came to be. And then I had an opportunity to go out and testify yesterday afternoon, and listen to some of the other testimony that was provided. They're, they're struggling with trying to come up with some sort of funding source opportunity for regionalization of jails, and they were very interested in the model that we have with Lincoln County.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
We, we had a planning and zoning meeting last night, it was maybe the shortest meeting that I've ever attended. We only had two items, and one was withdrawn at the request of the applicant, and we were out of here in 25 minutes, or was it 26, Eric? Anyway, we got out here, out of here pretty quickly.
You're setting the groundwork for the next commissioner who's going to take planning and zoning over, right?
That's right. I've told those commissioners to, planning commissioners, to mold the next elected one into the shape they want.
I'd also say, this last week, and I, as you all know, I was gone, there was another SJC community engagement park event, and I can't even tell you the name of the park, but I heard that it was the best turnout they've had so far, and it was over 120 people, I think, attended that park event. And it's on some of the outlying parks in our community, and just trying to make those relationships between law enforcement and firefighters and elected officials in our community, and they've been very successful, so. If there's no more liaison reports, I would go to non-actionable commissioner discussion. Seeing none, I'm-
Wait, wait. I have a couple of things. One is, for those that have attended our meetings over the last many years, you may notice that we go through the Pledge of Allegiance a little faster, we don't pause for the comma there. And so it sounds a little different when Chairman Hiberger leads us, and that's the way we inherited it. But I would also say that on the election issues, there were some good points brought up, but there was also some stuff that clearly was unnecessary. And finally, I would say that at $97 a day in jail, that's $35,000. It only cost $23,500 to go to USD.
Thanks, Commissioner Barth, and I'm going to comment again on the Pledge of Allegiance. If you look it up online, there's actually no comment, I mean, no comma in there, and that's why this commission and past commissions have tried to say the Pledge of Allegiance correctly, and I've tried to point out to people in public, say it correctly. There is not a comma where they're adding a pause, so it kind of changes the context. Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to recess for about eight to 10 minutes for executive session.
My motion, second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.